All right, I'd like to call this June 20th, 2013 Cookville City Council Meeting to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
No changes.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Uh, old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 6th, 2013. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, before we get into the consent agenda, uh, yes, we have a colorful crowd here with us, and we wanted to, uh, to recognize these guys, uh, so just in case, I mean, we'd love for you guys to stay, but in case you wanted to go, if you needed to be somewhere, uh, we're actually, we're gonna honor our police chief tonight, so that'd be a good thing to say, so, um, but, wanted to point out, the Cookville High School Test Club, you guys are coming here all the time.
There ya go.
Um, but anyway, the, the Test Club, the, uh, in a contest of more than 100,000 teens from across the country, um, who raise their voices for teen safe driving as part of the Act Out Loud Contest, there was one winner only, and it was the Cookville High School Test Club, was awarded a $10,000 grant, I suppose, um, and not only that, of course, you guys were in country, got to meet country music star Tim McGraw, and I was telling these guys back there, I actually heard that song on the way over here, I'm not just making that up, 'cause I've, I've not heard it on radio yet, I, I watched your video back, what, a month or so ago when you were here, and that's the first time I'd really heard the song, the first time I heard it on the radio was today, um, but we wanted to recognize you guys and say congratulations, and thank you for representing Cookville extremely well, and, uh, I mean, I hope you guys come back another month or so for something else, I mean, but, um, congratulations, um, I don't know if anybody else would like to say something?
No.
Good job.
Yeah, it's always great to see young people stepping up and taking leadership roles and speaking out, and particularly at this age, sometimes it's difficult to be a little bit vocal, and especially when it's vocal about subjects that people, you know, don't always, I mean, we all believe in safe driving, but sometimes when we're in our teens and even older, you know, we laugh about, um, driving and, and to know and recognize that it's serious and that it's something that you need to, uh, be serious about, and I'm looking out here, and a couple of you have been in my class before, and I always say that, um, you know, they're gonna let you drive the killing machine, and that's what a car is, if you don't drive it correctly and don't obey the laws and stuff, so, good to see you guys here tonight.
I think over 350 schools were involved, and of course, we have the winners.
Yeah, that's great.
And, uh, I mean, just so, yeah, just so everybody knows, I mean, like, the runner-ups were from Texas, Indiana, Massachusetts, California, Illinois, uh, but, there's only one winner.
And that's us. That's you.
That's you.
That's you.
Uh, I do wanna say, I mean, this, this shows your, your leadership capability, 'cause, like Ms. Anderson said, I call her Ms. Anderson since you know her as a teacher, but, uh, like she said, I mean, it takes, it takes some nerve to stand up and say some things that maybe aren't the cool thing to say, or, or point out some things that, uh, maybe your peers don't wanna hear, but, uh, we appreciate you guys being leaders and taking that initiative and, uh, and doing just a doggone good job of, uh, in this contest, too, so, uh, you make us proud, and, uh, I was serious when I said, "I'd love to see you guys back here in another month," well, honor you, honor you for something else, but, uh, keep up the good work, and, uh, thanks for representing Cookville. All right, on to our consent agenda. Uh, item three, consider awarding bids for chemicals from the Water Quality Control Department, and item four, considering awarding bids for transformers for the electric department. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the new business portion of the meeting. Uh, item five, consider resolution 130604.
Next to us.
Participating in the TVA Sustainability Programs for Economic Development, sponsors Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor and Council, you have before you a resolution for approval to, um, support our participation in the TVA Valley Sustainable Communities Program. Um, as you know, the TVA region is a seven-state region, um, they've put together a program specifically based on economic development practices and ways that we can continue to differentiate our communities across the country, how the valley can be different, and, um, one of the ways in doing so is that over the last several years, even in our request for information from prospects and site selectors, there are questions about the community's sustainable practices, so, um, our own Cookville Unplugged Energy Leader Team pulled together and put together an application submitted to TVA, and we were one of, we think-
Boy, over 13.
-12 or 13 communities chosen out of the seven-state region, so, we're very proud, our goal is to obtain, um, a silver level, there is also a platinum, I mean, a gold and a platinum higher levels, um, but we really feel like it's good business to manage your resources well, and that will be reflected, um, in what we do with economic development as well, so, this stamp of approval, when we complete the program, will be on all of our, um, marketing pieces, um, on our website, um, when we put together proposals for prospects, then our accomplishment in this program will be duly noted, and I request your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from council?
Uh, I have a comment, you know, and economic development is more or less a process of elimination, and, and the, to stay in the game is not to be eliminated the first round, and I just think this is, uh, commendable that we're gonna do this because this helps us from being eliminated, from getting, this is, uh, a benchmark to help us in our economic development, so, I'm very much for this.
I will tell you, our internal team and the progress and the accomplishment success we've had here with our Cookville Unplugged Team really, um, has been the springboard for us to be able to get to this point, so, kudos to all of our energy leaders out there that might be watching tonight, we appreciate all of our staff's support in helping this program.
It's just a forward-moving thing, and for us to be participating in this, I think it's very important, and I think companies look at that and-
Yes, ma'am.
-and folks who move here look at that kinda stuff.
They do.
Taking athletic terms, this gives us a little more bench strength when we're looking for businesses to come in.
Yes, sir.
That's right, that's right.
But I did wanna tell you, of course, we're applying for the silver as opposed to the gold and platinum, and I didn't want you kids to think that we're not, not applying for the best, um, there's a little bit of a cost involved, so, silver, silver fits our budget a little better than the gold and platinum, so.
Affordability.
Tough crowd here today. I know, well, they're number one.
Which is a sustainable-
Want us to go for number one, too?
We are third.
Which, which, Mayor, in itself is a sustainable decision, okay?
Yes.
That's true.
Well, yeah, Melinda, I just appreciate the unplugged, uh, committee for looking at this, after we went through work session, I kinda looked around a little bit on this, and, yeah, this is, uh, this is important, 'cause it's, not only it's good for, as Jim, uh, as Councilman Woodford mentioned, uh, it's good for business, it's also good for our community, it's good for individuals, and, you know, it's kinda, we, we partner up worldwide with this, I mean, we're trying to be good stewards, and that's, uh, that shows that Cookville's in the, Cookville's just a sleepy little small town, we're in, we're in the game, we're in the game, we wanna make this place, world better place, so, I, I like it, it's good, and it, our investments is not, it's not a lot, we're starting, kinda taking baby steps, and we're gonna do a good job.
Thank you. Having been a part of the Cookville Unplugged, um, since its inception, um, I think it's commendable that, with the help of all the employees and everything, that we've been able to save approximately seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year with low-cost, no-cost, uh, items that we've done, and it's just, and I think that, that this is just the beginning of what we can do.
Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. All right, item six, consider resolution 130606, authorizing a continuing budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, we are still in the process of developing a budget for fiscal year 2014, uh, until such time as that budget is adopted, uh, this resolution will allow us to continue to operate under the appropriations we have for the fiscal year 2013 budget, so, with that in recommendation, I would recommend that we approve this resolution so we can continue to operate, uh, come July 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, consider resolution 130605, expressing appreciation for service rendered to the city of Cookville by Robert Bob Terry, Chief Terry, Cookville Police Chief, and sponsor is Mr. Jim Shipley, felt like it'd be a lot more appropriate since he has worked with you for longer than I have, I would be honored-
Forty-five years.
Something, something like that. Don't listen to him, Chief Terry.
It's the big thing.
It's nothing new, listening to him.
I would be honored to do it, but I felt like you guys have been-
In the trenches.
-through a little, through a little more than you and I have.
If you got anything to say, are you waiting on me?
No, I just, I've just decided, after my retirement, I'm gonna start calling it what everybody else on your staff's called you behind your back. That's, that's just Jimbo.
Yeah, okay. Okay, uh, let me read this resolution. Whereas Robert E. Terry became a sworn law, law enforcement officer with the Cookville Police Department in September of 1972, beginning his career as a public servant that has spanned a thirty-seven, that has spanned 37 years, benevolent service to this community, and whereas Bob's service to the country was through the Army National Guard for nine years, his service to the department was as an officer, detective sergeant, and criminal investigator until he was appointed chief in September 1998, he was coordinator of the Community Policing Program, Crime Stoppers, and director of the 13th Judicial District Drug Task Force. Whereas Robert E. Terry holds the distinction of being the longest-serving chief of, uh, chief of the Cookville Police Department to date, and was at the forefront of, forefront of developing innovative policing policy, policing strategies and organizational dynamics over the past 15 years, whereas Chief Terry's unique understanding about police work and management is evidenced through the department's continuing, continued national accreditation designation as a, well as being instrumental in the development of programs benefiting the youth of our community, such as the Police Athletic League, Teens Need Training, Soapbox Derby, National Night Out, the Ralph Walker Memorial Scholarship, and fundraising to benefit the Mustard Seed Ranch, and whereas Chief Terry's distinguished service includes leadership roles on the Police Athletic League Board, the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police, the 13th Judicial District Drug Task Force, Middle Tennessee Methamphetamine Task Force, Board of Governance for the Fusion Center, and Board of Regents for Nashville Tech, and whereas honor is due to Chief Terry's wife, Glenda, and children Shannon and Jordan for the support they have provided to Chief Terry, as well as the officers he serves, and the supportive law enforcement efforts in this community, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookville, Tennessee, it is the sense of this council that those dedicated public servants who unselfishly devote their lives to the preservation or order and the protection of others are worthy and due full praise for their commitment and noble endeavors, now therefore be it further resolved that this most auspicious occasion be marked by honoring Chief Robert E. Terry upon the occasion of his retirement after 37 years of dedicated service to the Cookville Police Department, this community and region, and that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office, to
Randy, do you think anything I can ask for right now? This is, if there, there was a time, this is it. Uh, I certainly would briefer miss, but I'll just simply say it's been a, a great opportunity to work for, for the city, uh, I've been around long enough to see it morph itself into a very professional organization, it's, uh, evidence by all these directors and hard work that they put into what they do, uh, we have meetings every Wednesday morning, and, and you can tell that every director in that room feels very passionate about what they do, and it's for more than just a paycheck, they truly care about their individual apartments, um, I'd like to take an opportunity just to say publicly how much my family has appreciated the support that we've received through the years since, since this job and before, and especially since Jordan became ill, uh, uh, when that happened, it's been a long time ago to everybody else, but not to us, uh, we were at rock bottom, and, uh, I went to gym, I just, I don't know what to do, I said, "I don't know about sick time, I don't know about how long it's gonna be," and, uh, the only thing he said was, "Just keep your pager with you, your phone with you, don't worry about it," and, uh, I think that all the other, all the other directors would agree with me that, uh, they could not have a better boss than Jim Shipley, and I thank you, and I thank you guys, too. Appreciate it.
That's fun, that's fun, can we do this again?
Yeah.
Let's do it again, one more time. I just wanted to make one comment, it's been, uh, it's been an honor to, uh, to serve with you.
I'll miss you, Bob.
He's not going anywhere, he's still moving.
I know, but what I mean, he won't be at council.
I've already talked to Randy, had him make faces.
Okay, good. Let's keep it real.
As you guys get older, it's always a good idea to pick out some people that you, you respect and you honor, and, uh, and kinda follow their lead, and that's one right there, for me, so.
Chief Terry, he's left, he's left Cookville a better place, but every, every hard-working man and woman wants to be able to say that, and you've left, you've left Cookville a better place, and I, I've been, it's a blessing for me to be sitting in this chair and be able to have the opportunity just to say that, and thank you.
Yes, and thank you for your passion and commitment for your department and for the city of Cookville, thank you.
I won't repeat everything they said, but I thank you also.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, well, I better do that, right? Um, I move that we accept this resolution honoring and expressing the appreciation for service rendered to the city by Chief of Police Robert Terry.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Thanks again.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Almost didn't pass your retirement there.
Could've voted no.
Could've voted no, see you tomorrow. Eight o'clock. All right, item eight, consider appointments to the Putnam County Library Board, Upper Cumberland Regional Library Board, uh, positions that are currently filled by Ms. Susan Pogue and Ms. Marla Williams, respectively, Ms. Pogue has expressed a willingness to continue serving on the library board, uh, and Ms. Williams has declined reappointment, but at the June 11th Library Board meeting, uh, the nomination of Ms. Alicia Eldridge to replace Ms. Williams was approved, so I would like to request that we reappoint Ms. Pogue and appoint Ms. Eldridge to the regional library board for, well, Ms. Pogue to the Putnam County Library Board, and appoint Ms. Eldridge to the regional library board for three-year terms. Do we have a motion for approval?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm going to move that, that, make that motion, but also, Ms. Eldridge is, it's not only the Upper Cumberland Regional Library Board, but she also serves on, on the Putnam County Library Board, so that's-
Both of them?
Yes, yes, uh-huh, so that's my motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item nine, consider reappointments to the Industrial Development Board, sponsors City Manager Jim Shipley.
Uh, the Chamber of Commerce has recommended the reappointments of Bob Allen, J.D. Parks, and Alan Ray to the Industrial Development Board for another six-year term.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
We're always grateful for people to serve.
Yes, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item 10, consider appointment to the Environmental Appeals Board, sponsors Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, Bob Fallhaber's term on the Environmental Appeals Board is expired, Lauren Shibikoff has expressed interest in serving, and we would like to recommend her appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item 11, consider awarding bid for a gas line replacement on Fisk Road, sponsors Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, the, uh, gas department, Cookville Gas Department recently opened bids to, uh, replace a six-inch gas line on Fisk Road, that project is roughly from East 10th Street going north to not quite the railroad tracks, it's about an 1,800-foot project, uh, we received two, two bids, one from a low bidder was Highways Incorporated, $273,365, but I would recommend approval of low bid meeting specs.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, this is the portion of the meeting we like to open the floor, uh, if anybody wants, would like to come forward, say anything, uh, good, bad, indifferent, uh, please do so, uh, we'd like for you to say who you are, who you're with, and if you could leave, keep it to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. All right, anything from the council?
I wanted to remind everybody, and I'm sure Mr. Woodford was going to do this, too, um, Wine on the West Side is Saturday night, it begins at 5:00, um, and it's going to be in the evening, and it should be an interesting and fun time, you may know more about the details.
It's 5 to 10.
5 to 10, and the west side, here in Cookville, it'll be a fun night, should be a fun, good night, and it promotes, um, it's a fundraiser for the Brian Symphony Orchestra.
Anyone else?
I have an announcement. Our, uh, first July meeting is scheduled for July the 4th.
I just had that pulled up.
Yeah, I don't think any of us wanna be here on the night of the 4th, uh, we will, uh, we will move that meeting till July the 11th, that's the next Thursday, and then we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting on July the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley, um, I guess with that being said, happy 4th of July, too, 'cause we won't be in front of you before then, Mr. Shipley, do you, do you mind going over the firework ordinance, just so everybody kinda understands?
It's a good, be a good lesson right here, hate to put you on the spot.
To sell fireworks, you need to get a, you have to get approval from the state fire marshal, and you also have to get approval from the city of Cookville, uh, I think it's $500, is that right? It's, it's some amount of money.
I think we could look on the website.
Yeah, you could look on the website, and it is also, uh, legal to fire them inside the city of Cookville.
On the 4th of July.
On the 4th, well-
Certain hours.
I think it starts, uh, somewhere around the end of June and goes through a few days after the 4th, and once again, you'd have to look on the website to get the exact days, I didn't know I was gonna have a test tonight.
Pop quiz.
Yeah.
Watch out for payback. Well, since we're not gonna meet before the 4th, I know it was really dry last year, and there was some concern, so I wanted everybody to at least be aware.
I don't think we have that problem this year.
We don't, thank goodness, uh, one announcement I wanted to make, uh, we have an employee, Mr. John Buford, in the Water Quality Control Department, who's also a member of the Unplugged, he's a energy leader team, uh, but he passed his, his State of Tennessee Water and Wastewater Operator Certification Board, grade- Operator Certification Board Grade Four, which is a test that you have to study for. It's pretty intense, from what I understand. So, he's a grade-four wastewater technician test. And I think, the way I understand this, this is the highest score, is it ever?
Yeah.
The highest score ever for this test. Another winner from Cookeville, huh?
That's great.
Highest score of 83. The previous high score was a 74.
Wow.
So, he blew that one out of the water. So, anyway, sorry. That just slipped.
Gosh, man.
That wasn't planned. So, congratulations to Mr. John Buford. Thank you for representing Cookeville well. Anything else?
Maybe we thought of thinking, Ronnie, all this success might be in the water.
Now it's getting deep.